Do you think maybe third?
Hello and welcome to the Mid-Atlantic Backgammon Study Session for December tenth, twenty twenty-five. If you're interested in joining our study sessions or our weekly tournaments, send us an email at midatlanticpg@gmail.com. We're going to continue with our match from a couple of weeks ago, since last week Eric talked about the Keith count. Maybe we'll have an opportunity to use that today. And towards the end of the study session, we'll break a little early for Eric to give an addendum to his presentation. Okay, so I'm gonna play the white checkers, at least for now, and everybody else can play with the red checkers. And you've got a five-two to play. You can give me your candidate plays that you would like to see in the voting. By the way, if you want to vote, go to slideo.com, put in twelve ninety-six.
I'm having trouble getting to see the the board. Screen, I'm trying, I double-click it and it looks like it's gonna maximize to the full screen, but then it's, it doesn't, I just see the, you and other people like the, your camera feeds.
Eric, because I see it fine on my end, so it's something on your end.
Okay. Let me see, pop out here, maybe. Yeah, by clicking pop out, I was able to to circumvent this, okay. It's fine, I guess.
I think, okay, we gotta start with the option of just running it out.
Sorry, Rick, you said what? Just run out?
Run out.
Yeah, okay, I've got that in there, bar eighteen.
One checker back. And the choice is try to escape it or burn a checker, I think try to escape it.
Yeah, if we try to escape it, we get a triple, triple shot it, but if we stay, we get double shot it plus an indirect seven.
Right.
Maybe, maybe there's not much of a difference.
If we had a productive other use, I wouldn't move into the triple shot. But anything else is counterproductive in my mind.
Yeah, you don't, far too, you don't think it's worth avoiding the triple shot by doing far too? Honest question, I don't really know.
Yeah, yeah, I, I was thinking if I didn't run, it would be at the twenty-three and leaving the shop, but you're right, twenty and four-two. It, it, that's not unreasonable. And if he hits, then he's gonna pre, unless he hits and gets a two, he can only cover one of them, but I think running out still, we, when you have one checker back, try to escape it, isn't that the rule?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's Pottle's Law. And this is specifically if you have a, a big race lead. Uh, the, the law is always run the last checker.
Well, I would always mean like not always. Counts as a big race lead.
I think fifty-five counts as a big race lead, and then seven more pips, so sixty-two. That, that's big.
So, I don't know if it's right, but that's gonna be my vote, I'll tell you.
Okay. The slider is open, ready for voting.
Alright.
And Charlie and Jorge, are you able to vote on the slider?
Couldn't get on it. I mean, I, I found it, but then it was asking me to to do the pass code and
You shouldn't need that, there is a spot right in the middle where you can put in twelve ninety-six, you don't need to have an account or anything.
I did put twelve ninety-six, I don't know.
Uh, so, because of the low amount of people here today, are we gonna do like three versus everyone else, or just?
No, I'm, I'm just gonna play the white checkers, at least for now.
Okay, okay, so I'm gonna go to slider, okay.
Okay, so one other person voted, so I'm guessing Jorge has voted, Eric, if you have, and Charlie hasn't.
I haven't, because I'm opening slider now.
Well, if you want to just tell us your vote, we can add it manually.
I just, just voted to eighteen.
Okay. I entered, joining as a participant, one-two-nine-six. In the arrow to the right. Okay, good.
So Charlie, you, you are able to cast a vote now?
I can.
Great.
I'm gonna go with B twenty-three-seven-two.
Okay, so that leaves bar eighteen as the plurality winner. So let's go ahead.
Two to one to one.
And do that. And pretty close.
Do, do I get smug equity for suggesting the top play, even though I didn't vote in it in the end?
I mean, yeah, I guess you, you'd get like half credit for that, right? Okay. Now, what's the score here? Score is six away, nine away. I'm holding a two cube. Uh, that is fraught with peril. There's no way this is a cube. You, you guys, you guys would snatch it up before the cube even hit the, hit the felt, so I'm gonna roll. Wow, I missed. What a terrible roll.
How much of an error was? Coming in on the twenty?
Nineteen millipoints.
Yeah.
Oh.
Uh, wait, nineteen minute, no, 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 nineteen minute points is bar eighteen. Uh, that's two hundred and eight millipoints for bar twenty-three-seven-two.
Uh-oh.
Yeah. So twenty centi points, uh, is what I meant by twenty, so twenty centi points, or two, two hundred and eight millipoints.
Alright, so I, I gotta play this four-three. Um, I definitely need to respect this five-point board over here, so I'm not gonna leave any shots. If I do this, it cleans up my checker. You could, you could still get stuck, you have a lot of work to do to get this checker home. Um, short of rolling, you know, double fives, six-five, uh, double fours. Um, I'm gonna get another shot at this, so while I'm here, I might as well just make my three-point board. When I hit your checker, I'm gonna wanna contain it. Having more innerboard points will be useful. I feel pretty good about this. Let's go back.
Be that.
My cube is so far away from being a cube because I'm an underdog in this position. Right, which is not surprising, when your opponent has a big race lead and just one checker to play with, it doesn't take much for them to get that checker around, so this would have been a this would have been a monstrous error. And the checker play, I think, pretty straightforward. Um, no blocks, cover the board. Okay, five-four for the red team.
Run it.
Just run it.
I don't think that's Doesn't seem to be any good reason to stay back, so running it.
If you're gonna hit, abandon your anchor.
Yeah. Right, so I, I'd, I'd be surprised, really surprised if it was right to stay back. It's just easier to clear this checker when you're missed. So, okay, so let's, let's just do that. Let's, let's see how big, how big it is. Yeah, not, not really close. Just bring it home. Okay. Um, not gonna cube, let's hit that. I got it. Okay, now for the three, now I still need to respect this board. So, one of the things I might really need to do is get out of this homeboard. If I stay there on the twenty point, uh, look at the disaster that double ones and even, and double twos even worse. Um, also.
You get more indirects if we jump out on the outfield.
Yeah, so if I, right, okay, if I jump out, then I, that actually gives me better coverage of the outfield where you're trying to, uh, you're gonna probably hop out. And, yeah, so I'm sure this is, I'm sure this is gonna be right. So now I'm faced with containment, which is very difficult. But this, this one's probably right. Okay, let's go back and look, yeah, not close. Okay, you danced. Um, I'm not gonna be sending over a cube for a long, long time, I got way too much work to do. And I have this big match lead, and I'm, I'd be redoubling, it would be foolhardy to do anything crazy. Okay. Alright, here's one idea, I could block six-five. Uh, this also leaves no shots, you can't hit me. Uh, worst-case scenario for me is you roll double fives and, and, and just hop all the way around. There's nothing I can do about that, I can't, I can't make the ten point or the fifteen point. So, I'm not even worried about double fives, if it happens, it happens.
Um, which means you can probably put your checkers in the, in the path of double fives, because it won't really matter.
If you get hit or not. I could do that, right, I could do this. So, I can put my checker in the path of double fives, because it, it doesn't matter, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get hit. Except it does matter, because that's how I could get gammoned. Um, if you roll double fives right now, you hit this checker. Um, and now I've still got eight checkers on the outside, and I got a lot of crossovers to come in. I've got five here, nine here, and then four more for the one on the bar. Fourteen crossovers to come in and bear off a checker, that puts me in real danger of getting gammoned.
That's true.
And, and, let's say, you know, at double match point, sure, I would wanna, uh, hang on to double fives as keeping me in the game, but here, I think I would just rather, uh, I'll just lose the single game and, and be done with it and not worry about getting gammoned, and red winning a gammon at nine away would be pretty good.
I, I was following and agreeing completely with everything you said, up until the double match point comment. I would think there's still a lot of merit in blocking the five-six.
Uh, yeah.
Even a double match point.
Sure, and, and that's I, I, I actually wasn't thinking that I might leave the checker there, I'm just, what I was saying is that if I was thinking about blocking, or, or being worried about double fives, I could consider putting that checker there, but I think you're right. I think in, in all circumstances, I wanna put these checkers here to block, um, five-six, that's two rolls instead of one.
Um, yeah, and also, and also those two checkers that are left, uh, and, uh, as blots, do a great job of covering the outfield.
Yeah, it's good, good coverage. If you step out to the ten point, then I can hit with the checker from the thirteen. Um, checker on the seventeen is not doing me a ton of good. Okay, so now, um, I expect to make a few errors in here, because I, I find containment very difficult. So, alright, well, let's see.
I, I also find containment really difficult, I blunder so much in containment games.
Okay, I got this one right, but let's, I, I, I don't expect to be making a habit of that. Alright, uh, nowhere near a cube, let's just keep rolling. Need, need to make a, a good point before I can even consider it. Alright, I, I, thank you, I called that. Okay, now I'm getting a little closer, but, um, I'd still be nervous about cuing this. I think I still don't wanna cube this. At six away, nine away, giving away a four cube is dangerous. Uh, you would love to send that back on eight, and it doesn't take much, so I might be making a mistake. But the mistake I would make, by not, uh, by missing a cube, won't be very big. But the potential of a mistake I could make, um, by sending over a premature cube could be enormous. So I'd rather just take my chances with making a small mistake. So. Oh, well, this is convenient. Now, interestingly enough, now I'm too good to double after this.
That, there's not much of a jump at this match score from going from not
It's very difficult to thread that needle.
Okay, can you check, can you check how much, how close to a cube we were before you made the six prime?
Yeah, I have to do now, because now it, it doesn't matter. Uh.
So this is after, this is after the, 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 the six prime?
Alright, so it, it said I missed a cube, and I, by a pretty sizable amount.
Oh, wait, so this is before, oh yeah, this is before I rolled the six-four. Okay, fine.
I, I, these are really difficult, because you can, you can make huge mistakes like this. And I, I don't know, I'm not talking about this kind of mistake, I mean, this is, this is a big mistake, but you can make double whoppers, triple whoppers easily.
So here, uh, there's little gammons, would it be worth, uh, would it be too good?
Yes, I, I'm gonna be too good after this.
Really?
Oh yeah, because, because nothing can go wrong in, uh, in a two-roll sequence.
But I thought that too good was only when there are significant gammons, but I don't see
No, that's not, that's not the right idea. Alright, I got this lesson from no other than Paul McGreal himself. It's not about how many gammons you can win, it's about whether or not your opponent can turn the game around in the next sequence. Okay, so by the way, certainly you're all gonna be doing this, right, that's it'll be a question about that. Okay, now, this is too good to double. Because, is there any possibility that the red checkers can turn this game around in the next sequence? My role followed by red's role. Can anything happen where I would, uh, you, you would be?
Double five looks kind of dangerous, uh.
I'll be fine with double fives, I'll play seventeen to two, hit loose, and then play eight to three.
Oh yeah.
And you, you still wouldn't take a goo, cube. You know, we talk all the time about market losers, right? Well, let's turn it around. Do you have any, are there any market gainers? That is to say, is there any situation where after this upcoming sequence, you would take a cube? Is there any scenario where I could roll something, and then you could roll something, after which, if I doubled, you would take?
Maybe not.
I think the answer is no, and that's really what makes this too good to double. You see, another thing is, I'm not committed to the end of the game. If I, if I think right now this is too good to double, I'm only committed until the next time that I have access to the cube. If something, if I roll something somewhat awkward, and I decide, you know what, let me just take the two points, I have the option to do that in two rolls. I'm not committing myself forever.
Yeah.
Rick, were you gonna say something?
Yeah, um, I agree, the math behind what you're saying makes perfect sense to me, I'm just also thinking from what you know, Eric's saying, maybe even make it slightly, like if our two on the, um, bar point were on the six point instead. There's still no sequence, we take it, but you're not gammoning us, just, you know, so it would be it would be too good, but by millipoints, because
Yes, that's exactly right. So, uh, assuming that these two points were on the inside, it would be too good by this very tiny amount, and what I'm doing is I'm taking a a free roll for this very tiny chance of winning a gammon.
Sorry, I, I couldn't see your mouse, uh, it's not showing to me, so uh, so what, what two points would be inside?
Uh, your checkers that you have on the seven point, if we move them inside,
Ah.
It would still be too good to double.
Because, so, so that red has a full six-point board.
Sure, you could, you could do that, I would still say it's too good to double. Okay, so I'm gonna roll. Alright, um. Alright, I'm gonna try to pick up some flexibility here. I'm, I'm I'm gonna, I'm looking for a couple of things here, um, I'm looking to close it out, but I'm also looking to, uh, hit loose, try to recirculate a checker, and pick up another, uh, hit another checker. That's how, by the way, how
I have a feeling that with this play, now double fives, we have to leave, uh, a slight possibility of a turnaround for red, don't we?
Uh, I'll still play seventeen to two, hit loose, and then I would play six to one.
Oh yeah, yeah, of course, you can do that, yes, yes.
Now, let's, let's do a quick experiment here, we were just talking about this position. We were talking about, I'm sorry, this position, but before the roll. Okay, so this is what I'm talking about, it's too good. Um, I don't win many gammons, and then the, the question was like, you know, what if we move some of those checkers to the inside? Alright, so today I'm prepared for this, I've got a new XG running here. Okay, and let's move these checkers to the inside. So I, so I've made this a, a perfect board over here, I, I think this is still gonna be too good, let's see.
Barely.
Just barely, right, you don't win very many gammons, right, six percent, uh, you know, that, that's something. That's higher than it was. Right now, where am I, where are these six percent gammons coming from? Is it because I close you out, and then I bear off all my checkers before you can get this, this checker home?
Uh, I think so, yes.
I think there's another scenario where you have to, I hit loose and you leave a block. Like, let's say I were to hit loose on the two point, and then you roll one-five, two-five, one-four, two-four.
Oh yeah.
You're gonna leave a shot, and I, I, I could have a, a crack at picking up another checker. Okay, then let's make this a little bit better for red, I think this is better, because that's fewer ways to leave shots. I think the gammon chances are gonna go down now. Yeah. A little bit. Okay, now, he, here's, here's how we can do it, we can really clean up, uh, how about that? Very unlikely now that I'm gonna, I'm gonna be able to pick up a second checker, right? I bet the gammon chances went down again. Yeah, three percent. So I'm taking a, I'm taking a free roll for a really tiny chance, and, and very likely, I'm just gonna have to cash the game at some point anyway.
So my, my rationale for these situations is, look, um, redoubling passing is just a three millipoints mistake, that's nothing. Whereas I have a bigger chance of making a mistake, if I keep rolling, and then at some point I do have a sequence where I where I am vulnerable, and will leave a shot, but I fail to see it. So I would rather double and pass now to avoid the human mistake of not seeing something dangerous in the future. What do you think about that?
Um. Do you want my honest opinion, or do you want?
Yes.
Okay, my honest opinion is you're, you're a little bit too wimpy.
Okay.
Now, I, I, again, this three percent, it's, it's really unlikely to happen, but every once in a blue moon, it does, right, I mean, three percent. That's more likely than rolling double sixes.
Mm-hmm.
So, it could, it could happen, um, I've, I've seen stranger things happen in backgam. Okay, back to the actual game. Uh, alright, five-two. There might be something here. Bringing both in. Okay, both in. And then I guess the other choice you could make is to clear the six point. Okay, I've got the slider open now, really don't know what's the, what's the way to go here.
Feel like that's, I'm gonna be more problematic down the road.
Keeping in mind that if you play seven-two-seven-five like this, one of the things I'm gonna do is I'm going to hit loose. And I might get a crack at another checker, and then Rick says maybe, you know, maybe there's more problems down the road if you do this. So I, I don't think this is such an easy play.
What, what about seven-two-four-two?
Seven-two.
Don't leave a
Okay, let me add that. And two-four-two, okay, there we go, I added that play for you, Eric. Let's see what, what that looks like.
I mean, it, it does stack checkers, but it doesn't leave an immediate, uh, vulnerability for us, and it doesn't break one of our homeboard points, but maybe not breaking a homeboard point isn't important when we are behind a six prime.
Yeah, so. Okay, we, we need one more vote to break the tie here. There's three votes, and they're for three different plays.
Adam, you're kingmaker.
Adam, are you there?
I am, why, what happened?
Uh, oh, okay, wait, we, we got a vote from Bill Powell, Bill Powell just voted for an illegal play, can't take that one, Bill.
I just got here, what's the red, red's roll?
Yep, alright.
Roll five-two.
Yeah.
What's the question?
What, what do you play?
Yeah, seven-two-seven-five.
Okay, done. Alright, still too good, I'm gonna keep rolling, and now I'm, I'm gonna hit loose with any six or five. And if I roll a four-three, I might not cover, I think I want to recirculate the checker. This checker in the outfield on the seventeen point, um, helps me to, uh, absorb weirdness.
Wait, you would hit, hit loose on a six or five, you said, not just a three or four?
Um, I'm, I'm not gonna break my full prime.
That's what I thought you said, so.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm not gonna break the full prime. Okay, so I think this is, this is an option here. Um, or I could, I could really go for it right now. Okay, let's, let's look at some of your bad rolls. Um. Look at how terrible one-five and two-five are, woo, that's juicy right there. That's four rolls, and I, I would get a double shot, that might actually be worth it.
Only, only two-five, one-five, you're not recirculated yet.
Oh, you're right, I'm not recirculating. Dang. Okay, now
Sorry, what, what, what is this about recirculating that I didn't understand?
Okay, well, let's say, let's say I do this. Um, imagine you were to roll two-five now.
Uh, yeah, no, I see, oh, because one-five wouldn't hit on the
Yeah, one-five wouldn't hit.
The white blot, that's true, okay, my bad. So, could, could you go back to the seven-five-seven-two play, just to see the, the other place?
Did look at that.
Yeah, as I imagine, it's competing for very little equity here, so it's, yeah.
But, the first choice.
First place is one we never discussed.
Huh.
And I would never consider, to be honest.
Yeah, me neither.
Hmm. Mm-hmm, the seven-two-four-two was better.
Why, why leave one blot when you can leave two?
Yeah, exactly. Okay, alright, just for the specter of uh, my opponent possibly rolling two-five, I think I'm gonna do this play. Okay, I do wanna look here, is there any weirdness that can happen next turn, let's just say
I, I have a que, I have an answer to that question about why leave two blots and not one.
Okay, go ahead.
And I think it's because with the one and two open, if you get enough pieces hit, all of a sudden, you're gonna get a backgame going, I mean, obviously their timing is horrible, but I think that might be the reason why you want
Yeah, but the timing is so bad, you don't have a backgame.
But would they want, they would wanna get hit, wouldn't they? I mean, if they're leaving two blots open.
No, definitely not, red does not wanna get a checker hit, you can't play a backgame when you're crunched.
Okay. Alright.
It, it's just not viable, red's playing damage control here, red's just trying to not get gammoned.
So, then why would they leave two blots?
I don't know.
Oh. Okay.
Okay, so I, I think this is gonna be my play, I'm, I'm going fishing here. Um, and, and by the way, there's, um, I mean, are there any other roles that are sort of weird? Not really, it's, I'm just looking for two-five, and I, I'm even okay with one-five, because then I can, I can try to hit loose, but the two-five is so interesting.
And two-six is also not as good, but good.
Right, because then I, I'm gonna get the direct shot here. Okay, now let's, just take a look at my play. Uh. Boy, do I feel smart. I cost myself some wins, but I won, I get a few more gammons. And that was just enough. Okay, uh, red danced, okay, I'm probably gonna have to cover that now, this is still too good. Um, if I roll double fives, I get to close, I get, I get a closeout, so that'll be fine. Um, I don't think there's anything that can turn this around, double fours is a little weird. I'll still keep my full prime, so I don't, I don't think anything bad can happen. I, and when I, in these kind of situations, I'm just looking for weird things that could possibly happen. Okay, now, now I'm gonna have to cover. Um. I don't think I wanna put a checker on the seven point. Uh, I, I wanna be able to get a closeout using the checkers on the seven point, so that um, when I'm bearing in the rest of my checkers, I get to decide where they go, so I'm pretty sure this is the play here. This is, this gives me better flexibility, and I'm gonna have, I may have to make another decision about the cube. Let's go look at my play. Uh. I'm sorry, I have it on a
You didn't even want you to cover the two.
Oh yeah. Gee, I, I went through that whole rigmarole about not, about leaving that blot, and then I, I covered it. Okay, I think, let's see, am I still too good? What can go wrong? Um.
Eric, while he's thinking, here's your chance to return his, um, description, call him a wimp now.
Right. Double fives might be a little bit weird, um, but I think I can take my chances, it doesn't leave a shot. Double sixes doesn't leave a shot. Uh, how about double fours? Hmm, it's fine, I think I'm okay, nothing leaves a shot, so let's, let's keep rolling, I think I'm still too good. Six-five. Alright, I'm gonna have to close it out now, I think. Okay, if I close it out, I'll be susceptible to double sixes. I may have to just cash this. Let's see if there's a way around this. Like, what if I, I don't know, I could I could dump a checker here. Well, this, okay, this could be it because Let's say you dance. Um. If you dance, I can always just cash this. So I I always have that option. But if you hit me With one six, one five, there I go. I get my chance at another checker again. So this is where my my free play here. I always have the option of just taking the points. And I get to free play this. So I I think I'm gonna do this, because if I play this I'll be susceptible to double sixes. I'm never gonna get the second checker, so my gammon chances are pretty low. Um, alright.
You're sus- you're susceptible to double sixes the other way as well.
To eh on this?
If you do six bot, where's this? Oh, no, not. Well, yeah, that.
Oh, no, no, actually, no, I'm not susceptible.
That, if you did that.
Yes, you are.
Hang on, I'm not because I'm gonna cash if you dance.
Oh, really? You would cash?
I would cash. I I don't think I it's I don't think it's worth playing on. Um. I I I want the points. Okay, I'm gonna go for it. This this is gonna be my play. May maybe I'm a Um I'm getting a little too greedy here, but let's let's see. Oh, yeah, I'm a genius. Look at this. Closing out the board is a mistake.
Yeah.
It's nice to be right once in a while. Okay, alright, I may have to cash this. Let's see. I mean, that's what I was just saying. Double sixes will leave a shot. Uh double fives, I have to do some, I have to shift, right? I'm gonna have to play to the ace point. Uh let's see, how about double fours? Ooh, double fours is kinda Kinda yuck.
Um, double fives also leaves a shock, right? Even if you shift.
It needs an indirect. And I have to vacate the six point. Not real, not real pleased with that. And my gammon chances will go way down. Um, alright, I think I'm gonna take the point. Take the two points. Um I I think my gammon chances are are a little low. Now, I'm maybe I'm being wimpy here, but uh Let's let's just go for it. Okay, I'm I'm gonna redouble and of course You're all gonna pass this, right? You you just you have no.
You passed it. I'm gonna guess it's a mistake. You're double.
Okay, could be. So this is this is Eric's opportunity to call me a wimp, right?
Yes, I did. You just you didn't hear. I did.
Oh, you did. Okay, yeah.
Thirty seconds ago, yes.
Alright, great. Okay, nobody wants to take this, right? You just you don't have a chance. Okay, let's pass. Let's look at my possibly wimpy cube. Oh, no.
And it wasn't uh a redouble pass in the move before, was it?
Yeah, let's look at the move before.
Now, your equity was over one.
It was too good, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, so I I did okay with threading this needle. I mean, I I missed this cube. Um, but I I did okay. Alright, um. So this is probably a good time. Eric wants to uh follow up on his presentation about um The Keith count with a few other things, so I'm gonna stop my screen share and Eric, you're gonna you're gonna take over now?
Uh, yeah, let me let me share mine here.
First, let me thank you, Eric. I used it to great advantage this past week.
Oh, great. Cool. Nice that you learned it then. Fine, yeah, that's great. Uh let me see, share.
Jacob, can I ask you, do you do? Did you find it difficult to use or do you feel comfortable with it?
I I it was it was a breeze.
Great.
Yep.
Sounds like uh Eric has really helped you out.
Absolutely. Eh, on a side note, I s- I watched Kit Wolsey get beat by an eleven hundred rating person yesterday. He must be eighty years old. I'm sorry, I'll I'll go back on mute.
Can you? Can you guys see my XG feed here?
Yes.
Okay, so.
No, I can't see your XG.
Hmm, oh.
Yeah, we're looking at a black screen.
Yeah.
Okay, uh my computer is really slow for some reason. It's all of a sudden. Uh something's I think, uh, ah, what about now? Because I can't see it like a.
Can see it.
Now we can see it.
Yeah, so people are talking about uh efficiency. And like uh how dumping your checkers, um they couldn't understand why dumping your checkers So far was a was a inefficient. And here, look at this position. Um White has thirty seven, so he's fourteen pips ahead Of of uh black. But even though he's on roll, he's an underdog. Look, he's less than fifty percent chance of winning. That's because of the all the wastage on his one point. So what what this means for White is like, even though his his pip count is much lower, He has still two checkers to To come in, so he's gonna be Uh by the time that he comes in with this two, these two checkers, then black's gonna be on roll, so black's gonna start Uh burying off the checkers first. And this only happens because Previously, White, instead of moving the ba- the the outfield checkers forward, decided to to take Uh Checkers in his six, five or four points and dump him forward. So that's why it's wastage, because White used the role that he could have used to get the The outfield checkers closer to home and instead Use them on the checkers that were already home to dump, to push them uh forward further. So that's why it's wastage, because it's a lost opportunity previously, in a previous role, White lost the opportunity to get his His um outfield checkers closer, so. Uh so that's wasted. That's uh one of the definitions of wastage is a lost opportunity in the pre- in the past That uh is now uh reducing your your win chances, right? Um. So, yeah, so this is in a very instructive position About wastage. And uh one other thing that someone brought up last week was that um Or uh or uh Jason was was alluding to is that whether people use this In uh use the Keith count in like actual tournament play. And I found a a thread by none other than Bill Roberti or Roberti. One of the legends of backgammon advocating for the Keith counting that he uses it And such, so I'm gonna Share the link here if you guys wanna uh Uh Read later his own explanations of uh The Keith count, uh but my computer is so slow, there's gonna take a while for me to do this For some reason. I'm gonna have to restart it after this uh presentation.
Can you just read? Can you just read the uh? Read the website to us?
Yeah, uh but it's taking a long time for it to open as well. I clicked it to open. Um, I should have left it open beforehand, but anyway. And also, the book that I'm reading right now is uh Cube Action Guru or something? Uh no, 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 it's uh Holding Game Guru by by um Jacob Stick Rice. And so he also uses the Keith count a lot during the book in several positions. Even though, even when it's there's still contact and technically you wouldn't need to use the Keith count. He uses it just to to see like, oh, if this were a pure race without contact, What would the Keith count say about my doubling or Or not? So and then He adjusts that by putting the contact on top, right? Okay, so if it were a pure race, this would be a pass, but because I have Contact, then maybe it's a take, so. Yeah, so You can even use that in in those situations as well by By accounting for the contact afterwards. Um, so, yeah. Another professional that advocates for the Keith counts, so and I'm sure you can find more examples as well. The Keith count is one of Is considered by professionals in general to be one of the best Counts. There's also one called Ice Sight. That's very, very similar to To Keith, and it's supposedly like uh someone supposedly took Uh a neural network, like an AI to and which took Keith And fiddled with it until it was optimized. It was supposed to be like a better version of Keith. But uh according to Joseph Hallett's uh testing, It's not very much. It's only like very, it's it's can even be worse than Keith in some Um In some positions, so like he didn't find Ice Sight to be actually better than Keith when he tested it. So Joseph Hallett still thinks that Keith is the best overall overall Um Cube action count uh method, even though as you saw last week, it can Can make mistakes, but every Uh Such method can make mistakes as well, and the other methods make more mistakes than Keith, so. Yeah, as far as I know, so.
The Keith count, the Keith count does a good balance between a fairly straightforward calculation and reasonably accurate.
Mm hmm, so.
There are more complicated methods that are more accurate, but they take a lot more effort to.
Yes, like EPC, yeah.
All the EPC stuff. It's really complicated, but it is more accurate.
Yeah, I don't think it's worth the trade off, but myself, to be very math math heavy, just to have a little more accuracy.
I'm I'm kind of interested in learning these EPC methods. It these are things that uh That Art Benjamin has done a lot of work on. And um I'm I'm very close to really diving into studying Art Benjamin's methods.
So uh in the chat here, I posted a Reddit post that's about wastage, so so if you want to understand wastage better. And uh the the two plus two one is is the Bill Roberti's uh topic on Keith.
For the for the Keith count, how do you count those two checkers that are on the outer board?
Uh let me check my Uh you you don't. You just count the pips. There's no special way to count for checkers in the outfield. So that's one of the way the ways that Keith is uh ma- maintains simplicity, because I sight you do Penal penalize uh white for for outfield checkers, but not an on Keith, and somehow it works out Well, so. Yeah.
I don't understand that.
Well, it it's it's counted as part of the pip count. It you don't do anything special in the in the computation.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I guess it's already baked in and the fact that those uh checkers being in the outfield is increasing White's pip count by a significant margin, so. Yeah. Probably.
Eric, if you're right, so that's. So the wastage here is what? Just all the guys on the one point or is it the one extra on the two? Is that a a one also?
Also, also the gaps on the six, five and four. Also, because every time you roll a five for.
Six, five and four are one each?
Yeah, you would add one for each, yes, because every time you roll five, six, six, five and four.
Two extra For the nine ones. So that'd be eighteen.
Uh, yeah, totally eighteen, yes.
And then one for the two?
One extra for the two, yes.
Twenty, twenty one, twenty two? So thirty seven becomes fifty nine?
Yes.
Did I do that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. But then, uh but then remember that if black were to double this, Then he would have to, because he now has a a lower pip count than than White's effective pip count. You'll you'll have to add one seventh. So this is another thing I wanted to to talk about. So some people Express concern that, oh, one seven is hard to calculate, one seventh, right? But you don't have to do it as one seventh. You can think of it as in the multiplication table for seven, Which everybody should have learned in school. I'm not sure what the the proper term for this is in English, but I learned, for example, Six plus six is thirty six. S- sorry, six times six is thirty six. Seven times seven is forty nine. Eight times eight is sixty four. So I learned this little song. So For example, here, bla- uh black would be fifty one, so Because seven plus seven, uh seven times seven is forty nine. That's uh very close to fifty one already, because it rounds down. I don't have to to think about What seven times eight would be. I just round down, so it's the forty nine. It's it's as if fifty one was forty nine, and I Know that I can, I only have to add Uh seven to Black's pip count. Right? So if it was fifty five, I would also add just seven, but from if Black had fifty six onwards, I would know that That Uh seven times eight is fifty six. So that's now I have to add eight to Black's pip count instead of seven. Right? So you can use this Seven times seven as kind of like an uh like a a milestone, a kind of uh reference, and you can just Uh you you know that If you subtract seven, so it would be seven times six. Seven, seven, uh forty nine minus seven is forty two, so just have to Um you don't have to remember the whole multiplication table for seven Uh this way. I don't know if it if it made made much sense, but Uh I hope it was Somewhat understandable. Do you have a better way to explain what I mean, Jason, or?
No, I I think you did fine.
Since, okay, okay. Okay. Cool. Yeah, so I think that's all that I'm gonna say.
Okay, I'm gonna mute everybody and I'll do a sign off for the study session and then we'll get into the tournament. Alright, thank you all for joining the Mid-Atlantic Backgammon Club Study Session for December tenth, twenty twenty five. If you would like to join us For our weekly study sessions or our tournaments, send us an email to midatlanticpg@gmail.com.